Twenty twenty four Commission meeting. We'll get started now. Let's stand for the pledge, Tom.
Pledge will be to the flag of the United States.
To the flag.
And each covered for which sentence, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, reason, and justice for all.
Right. Eddie, what do you got for us?
Just some exonerations. Some of them are paid, they're not going to be paid, so we're going to go ahead and exonerate them.
I make a motion to approve exonerations.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is kind of weird now.
We also have it divide, combine.
Set it back. I'll make a motion to divide, combine, divide, and segregate land.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
New place another sound, right? The two of them?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the payroll for eleven one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Eleven minutes.
Any concerns on the vouchers and invoices?
No.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the vouchers and invoices.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have meeting minutes, Ruth.
Did we get the changes, Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That move, we approve them.
Well, there should be three settlements.
Oh, which other ones do we have, John?
Robert said you're not going to do canvas yet. Wilbert said we're not going to do canvas yet.
Okay.
Yeah, so just the thirtieth and the special on the thirtieth.
October the thirtieth and then the special meeting on the thirtieth.
Okay.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the estate settlements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just to clarify, we are not going to certify the election results until we have the entire state reporting, and we'll do a special meeting on that on Tuesday.
Wait a minute, let me make sure I'm available.
It'll, it'll be through Zoom, Allison.
Okay, it's just gonna, okay, yeah, I don't have the dentist till eleven thirty, so if we do it at nine, I could, I'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Ruth?
This is an energy efficiency grant that Amy applied for to upgrade the lighting fixtures, writing?
Uh, yeah, the, the light fixtures and the bulbs to LED in the, in the main courthouse.
My motion to approve. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
My group, number two.
So, Matt, Matt Ford, are you on there?
He is.
Okay, so the next request is Mountaineer Manufacturing to a brownfield phase two. And Matt can explain it.
Matt?
Hey, good morning.
Morning.
I guess first of all, congratulations on the phase three groundbreaking of the Meadow River Rail Trail. Um, big news for Fayette County as well as the, uh, the Snake Island Recreation Area EPA Grant. Big things happening in Fayette County, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
The, um, the D P had sent over a work order for, um, a phase two environmental site assessment for the Mountaineer Manufacturing property that's located at eight fifty seven Midland Trail in Smithers. And, uh, the D E P has, uh, almost spent all of their brownfields assessment funds. And, uh, Fayette County has quite a bit left in their assessment grant, so I was thinking it would make sense for Fayette County to, uh, to cover the phase two for Mountaineer Manufacturing. And this is to facilitate, uh, Smithers purchasing that property. Uh, because with D E P being limited in funds, they're trying to get some other sites assessed across the state. And, uh, with this one being in Fayette County, it just seemed like it made sense. The property approval questionnaire amount would be, uh, sixty five thousand dollars. It would be submitted to the, the, um, EPA for approval, but it would, the ultimate phase two would cost less than that. And right now, you've got about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars left in your budget for your brownfields assessment grant.
Allison, you have any questions?
I don't.
Oh. Then I'll make a motion to approve the sixty five thousand.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ruth, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Um, there's three other sites, did you, is that, are those on the list?
They're not on the agenda.
We're doing those on the fourth.
Very good, all right, thank you all.
All right, man.
Bye.
All right, Allison, you still have service, I'm guessing.
Yep.
Okay, so
For how long?
The, is the building inspector, do you want to do that now?
Um, no, I think we need to go into executive session for that one.
So we'll do that towards the end?
Yeah.
So that would be three, four, and five, because they're all personnel related, do you want to do those towards the end?
We can, but I mean, I think we can go ahead and do four, you could just make your rec, or, hold on, let me look, my number's four. I'm sorry, yeah, you can do number four and just make your recommendations. And then we can, you know, discuss and, and approve.
So, number four was a six month probation. Period is up for Jack Kincaid at emergency management, and I mean, I have no issues, I think he's done a great job, and actually made my life a lot easier. And I appreciate that, so.
Other than he's dressed in a suit today, you know, that's a little problem, I have.
Oh, yeah, he's here in a suit.
And, and that wraps into number, number five.
Right.
Right.
So, yeah, because January one, the Department of Labor has changed the minimum salary level for exempt employees. So, and it goes to fifty eight thousand, six hundred and fifty six dollars a year. So, um, and I think
So
Go ahead, Allison.
I, I was just gonna say, you know, I talked to Ruth about who, which employees um, on our main staff, this doesn't include the other elected official staffs, but which employees on our main staff um, we think should be sour, salary who aren't already, um, rather than hourly. And, um, and we've identified, how many, four, three?
Three, yeah.
Three, and, and that was, um, Gia, uh, Brian Good and Jack. And so, they, Gia is, is, um, due for raising as our deputy county administrator, I'd like to move to approve a salary for her sixty thousand a year.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, uh, for Jack and Brian, I'd like to bring them up to the, uh, overtime threshold of fifty eight thousand, six hundred and fifty six a year. That's a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Favor. Aye. I made it to Exxon, so I might not get cut off, prayers.
All right, the next one is?
We're good.
Uh, the next item, there's a letter to the state regarding the Office of Emergency Management, we haven't drafted it yet, but I think it's basically removing a former employee and saying that Jack will take over those, Allison, is that your understanding?
Yes, we just need to officially inform them, um, Jack has advised us that they, they probably need a letter, so I'm going to move that we approve a letter to the state just simply advising them, um, that Jack is our Office of Emergency Management point of contact for Fayette County.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then you wanted to do a letter to the chamber about the Boy Scouts, because the
Right.
Your time runs up.
Right, so remember, guys, five years ago, every five years, we have to certify to the legislature that the Boy Scouts tax exempt status is not unfairly competing with our local businesses. And it's that special time, Ruth says, Ruth, when does it do, like the?
January first.
January first, so, so I'd like us to send a letter to the chamber, um, this is even later than I wish, but, but to the chamber and ask them to send something out to their um, businesses, registered businesses, and maybe even post something on our Facebook page and ask for feedback. Um, so we can make a decision and, and write our letter to the legislature on the meeting on the fourth. So this letter, and I can circulate it for edits, but, but in theory, I'd like us to, I'm going to move that we send a letter to the chamber, um, asking for that data.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
May, Allison, I want to ask you a question.
Aye.
Is there any way you think we could do this, of both commissioners? And last time we did this, nobody had any feedback, and everybody complained afterwards. Is there any way we can do this in such a way that their, if they do email or contact us that somehow it's not public, so they'll actually give their actual true thoughts? Or is that going too far?
Well, I don't know that they can tell us anything, I mean, Anthony, can you chime in on this? I don't, I don't know if they can give us feedback that we, that is, I don't think anything we do is, is public. That's my concern about it, but I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from.
So are you asking if they could comment anonymously?
Yeah, yeah, because last time, nobody, it seemed like everybody was afraid to say how they felt about it. And then after the commission made some decisions, uh, everybody was outspoken, said whether they're doing this, they're doing that, well, they didn't come outspoken, they talked to us individually, individual and, and some other people. And I'm like, why didn't you say this, why didn't you tell the commission this? So I mean, I think they're either afraid to do it. I, I just, you know, keep it, their identity and who, who they are between the commission or something, I just try to get them to be outspoken instead of afraid to say something.
I mean, the problem, the problem that I would say is the mechanism, I mean, how would, how would it be done phenomenally? Because I don't see how that happened during a meeting, but I mean, in theory, I don't see why people couldn't submit something to the commission ahead of time in writing anonymously, but, but the flip side of that too is, I mean, if I'm on the commission and somebody doesn't want to put their name on their complaint or their negative view or their positive view, to me, that's going to fall into question the legitimacy.
Well, I mean, what if the commission could keep it to themselves, uh, like, like we do with the lawyer?
Well, but, I mean, there's a specific rule that says anything that's discussed, but only a client and their attorney is confidential and is not subject to public disclosure. The commission's only run that luxury, I mean, everything that we do is subject to the Open Governmental Meetings Act. So we are prohibited actually from keeping things behind closed doors, except in limited, there's limited circumstances, such as getting, uh, advice from your attorney, employment matters, that type of thing. So I, I just don't know how, I don't know how we would.
So if their attorney contacted you?
Well, but
Two other lawyers saying no.
Well, I mean
People don't know that, we, we're still not going to know the source of the information.
Okay, I just have
Let's approach it in a way, is there any way that people could provide verified but anonymous information to the commission, even if it's not directly to us? Um, you know, maybe even through the chamber, if the chamber reported the information and verified the business feedback, is that something we could do?
I see one lawyer shaking his head.
Well, I don't know, that's why I'm asking Anthony, I'm just, I'm trying to ask the question in a way that we're thinking about it, how could we do what Tom wants to do? Um, in, in, in the hope that it would get us more accurate data? You know, the chamber said, I have three businesses that said this, and I have five businesses that said this, and the chamber knows who the businesses are, but we don't.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, for making it a lot easier for me.
I still, I still feel that if I was on the commission and somebody wasn't willing to stand behind their opinion, I mean, I'm not saying you couldn't do it that way, but
I'm just trying to get people more outspoken about, you know, instead of complaining after the fact. And they don't want to, some people are scared to even say anything.
Well, I, I, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what the solution for that is.
Okay.
Well, in all, in all fairness, Anthony, last, last time we did this, that's pretty much what we got, but we did it less, um, formally last time, because we had a, we were late in getting the document in, uh, didn't realize we had it, and it snuck up on us, and the chamber came back and said, feedback was mostly po, you know, positive. Like there wasn't, you know, negative feedback at the time, and we did not get specifics, like how many businesses or anything, we didn't get stats.
Is the chamber? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that was it, that was it, go ahead.
Is the chamber subject to the Open Governmental Meetings Act?
Probably.
Well, then, I don't know how.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I mean, that's a good point, I just, I mean, I was just trying to think of, you know, the top of my head about how to accomplish what, you know, to give them some anonymity if they desired it to give us that feedback, but, um, I mean, I, you know.
Okay, I under, I just thought I'd think outside of box.
Like I said, I think, I think you can take input anonymously in writing, but the flip side of that is I just don't know how much weight you would want to give.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with Anthony on that, I mean,
I do too.
I don't want it to be unverified, because if I'm a mad business owner, and I'm at the Boy Scouts, I could submit six different, you know, anonymous complaints, you know what I mean, I, you know, it needs to be verified. If we're going to put our reputation behind it.
All right, sorry for the interruption, that's all right.
We actually have three minutes before we start the funding request, or actually, we could do those now.
Can we all give permission to stamp our names to those letters once they're, you know, approved in email?
Yes.
I do too.
Thank you.
I do too.
Okay, Ruth, do you have any problems with this going on to nine twenty? Okay, the first funding request was made by St. Andrews Episcopal Church. They were, um, to actually, you know, everyone's heard of the, um, Thanksgiving meal that, that they started back in two thousand. This year, they're anticipating over thirty two hundred meals will be prepared on Thanksgiving Day. Uh, last year, I worked it on Thanksgiving Day, and I was tired by the time ten o'clock came around. Um, unbelievable, the amount of food that was prepared and, and sent out throughout the entire county. Uh, this is a great cause. They have grown exponentially and have run out of refrigerator and freezer space. So they have come to the commission asking for fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars for a commercial sized refrigerator and freezer.
John, didn't, didn't one of the, didn't the refrigerator or freezer go out, I thought one of them failed.
Yes, one of the, the freezers failed, and, and they need to replace that, plus the refrigerator, because if you think making turkeys for thirty two hundred people, that's a lot of turkeys and a lot of turkey breasts. So, uh, it, it's a, it's really a great cause. I, I, uh, this is something I really get behind and help. Uh, I would like to go ahead and make the motion to approve, uh, the fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Allison, can we take your name to this letter?
Yeah, that's what
Yes. You can set my name to anything you are able to, and I'll sign anything else tomorrow.
All right, the second funding request is for the Anstead Ministry Center, and it again is for, um, feeding their, their, uh, soup kitchen. So it's going to be for supplies and food, they give out monthly. Um, Allison, you want to talk more to this one?
Yeah, they also, it's kind of like that, the center that we supported, that daycare that we supported in Smithers, that they also give out diapers. This is a, a ministry, so I want to distinguish these, because we haven't been giving to church, specific churches. But these, these are programs within these that are supporting the entire community. Um, and in this case, Anstead also, they're going to be serving Thanksgiving meal. They also give out, um, they give out diapers and other sorts of things to support the local families, and several churches are involved in that ministry, so, um, I was going to make a motion that we, we've been giving about twenty five thousand dollars at a time to these food banks. Um, they're, they function as a food bank, and they do, you know, like I said, diapers and other sorts of household needs and, um, to support families, so I'm going to move that we approve twenty five thousand dollars for the Anstead Ministry Center mission.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye, and this is out of the ARPA funds for these three requests, for the record.
All right. And we have the five oh one C three forms on the other two. The third one is the Good News Outreach Incorporated, and I think they have representatives here today. Okay, you want to come up and tell us a little bit about? And thanks for coming in.
Yeah, I'm glad you made it, because we didn't have a lot of information, and I really wanted to be able to, you know, consider this seriously today.
Well, the Good News Outreach Mission Incorporated has been in, in effect since nineteen ninety nine. And the lady that just turned it over, she is eighty plus years old, and she wanted to continue this program for the community, she has always provided clothing, food, commodities. Um, she also did Thanksgiving dinners through the same program that you, Ms. Renneman, were involved with, and we are going to continue that this year. We also would, well, we've started a read program with our kids at schoolhouse, and we just want to be able to also offer them Saturday reading programs in the facility and give them a book and do some games with them, read with them, and just have activities along with our food pantry and just different services needed in our community, such as baby formula, diapers, assistance with meals, and um, all utilities, maidling, like our water companies, sewer companies, the AEP, we have a lot of requests for that kind of stuff. And it's our, our facility hasn't really done a whole lot in the past year, other than through the mayor's office, which I do have a mayor with me. I've, I've kind of drafted him in on this, because we have purchased prom dresses and tuxedos for our children at the local high schools, and we allow them to, they can either borrow and bring back or take them home, and we charge them nothing. So we do that, we offer the clothes, when we've bought shoes, bags, we've, we've done a very large variety of things without funding, and it has became a big chore, and we have had a lot of requests for our food pantry to start back up.
Okay, I, I know Mayor, Mayor Bridge has been here more this year than I think he's been here for a while.
Well, and this can, and I'm glad you said that, John, because this is for the Meadow Bridge area, could you guys tell us the air, the areas that you serve with this mission?
It is local areas, um, Meadow Bridge, you've got Springdale, it's Fayette, Somers County, Greenbrier. Anybody in these counties can come to us for assistance, but mainly all of our area here in Fayette County on that end comes to us, we have a few from Somers and a few from, or not many, mainly just our end of Fayette County.
Thank you.
All right, so they have come in and asked for food pantry for fifteen thousand, community services for twenty thousand, and then thirty thousand for repairs and remodel. Is this for your building that you keep the things in?
Yes.
Okay.
Apparently, we have, every time it rains, we have water that always comes into the building. And there's, if you have anything on the floor, it just becomes trash, because it just gets destroyed. So our sidewalks, we have noticed that we're at the foot of the hill, so all that water just comes in, so we want to do a drain around the building and redo our sidewalks, because the sidewalks lean inward to the building. It's just, instead of leaning out to the parking lot, they're coming in the doors of the building.
Okay, do you have your five oh one C three?
I'm not sure, I have a, a bunch of paperwork.
If you hand it to Ruth, she'll look at it quickly and let you know.
I mean, I don't know that they have to, I mean, as long as they're not for profit, as long as they're a nonprofit, I think we're okay.
Whenever I took over, I said I would volunteer to take over this, I, I was handed no records of any kind.
They said it's organized as a nonprofit, um, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, so they, they're requesting a total of sixty five thousand.
We have already, how does this organization pair up with the community center that's up there, and is it Meadow Bridge that we allocate a significant funding toward?
Yes.
Yes, we are completely separate. The Good News Outreach Incorporated has no affiliation with the town or the community center, we are our own little entity.
But, but I'm just asking, like, do you complement each other's services that you provide, or is it, is it duplicated in some ways?
What our, what our organization does is completely different from any other in our community. We don't, there is no cross, crossing over lines, we don't, like our community center, it is for feeding seniors. And the town will rent it out for parties for folks in the area. So there's, there's no other services provided in our community that we are offering.
Well, I could see, again, giving them twenty five thousand dollars for their food pantry. Uh, as far as the other two, I, I think that we can take a look at those again in December.
I, I think that's, I think that's a good idea, John, uh, I mean, I, because I was just, I was here turning on, trying to decide, I, I'd like to take a look at the big picture and see how much we invested and make sure we're still investing fairly in all the communities before we make a decision on those other requests.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve twenty five thousand dollars to the Good News Outreach Incorporated Food Pantry.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, one thing, we also want to say is that, um, we received some money from the government, ARPA money, and we have been able to distribute it throughout the entire county, not just one area. Um, so we went from Montgomery all the way to Meadow Bridge, all points in between. And that's something that this commission's very proud about, it hasn't been done before. Just to bring it up, and I know Tim's pretty happy with all that that we've done, so it's about time that we got some stuff to Meadow Bridge. All right.
I agree.
Okay, um, let's move on. Uh, we're a little bit behind, it's my fault, that's okay. We are the, uh, planning commission recommendation, so Angela, you want to come forward? What you're going down?
So, John, you're a minute early.
Okay. That's all right, I'm doing good, Angela said, so.
Yeah.
Allison, did you get a copy of the minutes from the planning commission meeting?
Yes, I got, I got those, um, when you sent them out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so, um, the first case we have up is, um, it's a request of triple Ts. They wanted to amend their current planning unit development on the property, um, described as surface fifty three point nine one three, P T Davis Lands, Wolf Creek, New Haven District. And I will just
And I will just read, um, the planning commission made a motion to approve the request as presented, um, and it, the motion passed. So, um, the applicant is here today and there are members of the public as well, so. Now, or if you guys have questions or if you wanna let the public comment?
Uh, we're gonna hold comments to two minutes and you can have one time to comment. So if anybody would like to make a comment, you have two minutes to do so.
I will.
Okay, come on.
And for my sake, if you could identify yourself, I would appreciate it and for the record.
Mary Parsons. And I know that this is probably going to be approved and it's very, very wrong. Nothing has been done right about the, what's going on with the commission. And all of my neighbors in Whispering Lane, well. I can verify has not even been addressed with this. That there's urban development in their backyard, their property, all the joints, tunnelways, systems property. So I don't know how you can justify doing this. With, uh, outdoing your job.
Okay, Angela, have any of the, have any of the ordinances changed with zoning since our last approval?
No, they have not.
Okay, thank you.
And Angela, were the property owners notified as, as is required by code?
Yes, I sent a letter via regular mail to anybody within two hundred and fifty feet of the property. Including the homeowners association. There was four letters went out, four letters and none of them were to Whispering Lane's business.
I mailed over twenty, I don't know. I've got, I keep a list of who I mailed them to, so.
Did any of them get returned?
No, there was none that got returned.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak? Jesse?
I'm in Whispering Lane.
You actually live seven hundred feet from Whisper, from his property line, just, I did measure after the last year.
Say your name, please, sir.
Jesse Bay. Having a rough time with her. Yes, sir. There's like eighteen of us in Whispering Lane. And everybody I talked to has not got a letter. The last time I was here, I didn't even know what was going on. So seven hundred fifty feet, my property runs in an L shape. Um, two hu, um, two point one five acres. My house is property valued about seven hundred thousand. The house next to me is Donnie Snyder's. His is running over a million dollars. It's up for sale. House across from him just sold for seven hundred thousand. So you got eighteen people out there, it's gonna be affected by this, and nobody I talked to has received a letter. Now, it doesn't say two hundred fifty feet, it just says anybody with, that's what your rule is. But the sunshine law says you need to contact or let us know. And it's under section six, one dash one of the West Virginia Code. Now, I used to be an insurance adjuster, so I've handled claims and I've been a thirty-eight year all-state agent. These people have not been properly notified under the West Virginia Code. And if that's not right, you, we can file a claim on the ethics commission and let them make a determination. Because those people are gonna be affected. So, I keep saying, nobody has been notified that I know of. And if you wanted to determine two hundred feet, from where did you measure to the property line? And I, I know several of Jack, a friend of mine who's an insurance agent.
Um, Tom. Tom.
Oh, sorry, two minutes. Okay, thank you.
Go on.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor? Question on the. On the notification, is it more than two fifty or is it two fifty?
Maybe I'd have to look at the statute.
I just went by. He said six, he said six one one. Um, I also wanna make a note though that, that the planning commission's, um. Agendas and the Fayette County Commission's agendas are, um, publicly noticed according to the sunshine laws. Though, um, but as far as this notification goes, I'd like to know what the code says.
He's looking it up now.
That's the beginning of the code. First part, it goes on, certainly on the very first part.
Okay, I'll look.
Do we have anybody else who needs to speak, John, in the meantime?
Yeah, anybody else wanna speak? Concerning triple T? Okay, no, not at this time.
Um, better keep on that shit. Saying six one one.
It should be six B dash one dash one, has to begin with.
Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with zoning. That chapter has to do with ethics, complex of interests and foundation of square interest.
You mentioned West Virginia, open meeting rules. That gives them the definition of building.
So I understand the issue, you're claiming the county's interpretation of the notice requirement is incorrect.
Saying that's state required.
I've been split, and then you can.
You know, the last time I was here, I tried to say something. You did the same thing too.
I'm not gonna talk over you, sir.
I'm not talking over you.
When you interrupt, you interrupted me. That's rude. I'm perfectly willing to give you the opportunity to respond to what I am going to say, but I'm not gonna stand for you interrupting me and cutting me off. Your comment was the West Virginia code provided a different distance requirement for notification versus what the county's interpretation was. The code provision that you cited is not, doesn't have anything to do with notice requirements. I mean, six one one is, it, it has to do with ethics and complex of interest. It doesn't have anything to do with notice requirements. So do you, do you have another code provision that I can fix?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
And Anthony, could you explain the open meeting law notice requirement just briefly?
I mean, essentially, the county commission or any public body is obligated to release its agenda. At least three days prior to the meeting unless it's an emergency situation. And my understanding. Um, of how the county commission posts its agenda is that. Uh, the agenda is created, it's posted here at the courthouse and a couple of different places. I believe it's also. Posted on the county commission's website. And essentially. The purpose of posting the agenda is to let the public know what issues the county commission is going to be considering at their upcoming meeting.
And these rules also apply to our planning commission?
Any public.
Right?
Any public.
Okay.
So it also applies to the planning commission.
And it, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'm not familiar with how a planning commission, um, posts the agendas for their meetings.
I was gonna ask Angela to go ahead and tell us when she posted and how, how often the planning commission meets and that sort of thing, just so we can make sure. We did it properly this time.
Yep, so the planning commission, they meet monthly unless there's no request for changes. Um, as far as publication or ordinance, whenever someone does have a request for change in land classification or rezoning. It actually has to be put in the paper fifteen days before. I do that as well as post it, um, outside of our. Um, courthouse in the section there. So it actually, our ordinance says fifteen days prior to a meeting.
So what?
Okay.
What about the notification requirements and the distance?
Um, our ordinance, our county ordinance says two hundred fifty feet of any adjoining property owner. So I use the assessor's map.
And is that from the nearest point of the property that is subject to rezoning to the nearest point of, um, an adjoining property owner?
Yes, yeah, it's from, even, even if his request was to be too close, I did anybody from the edge of his property. If anybody's property touched forward within two hundred fifty.
Okay, so you notified anybody that actually abutted the property and then anybody who was within two hundred fifty feet of the property?
Correct.
And how did you determine that two hundred fifty feet?
Um, the assessor has a measuring tool.
Okay.
So I use the assessor's measuring, and I keep a list of everybody I did mail.
And how were the people that reside here, this property notified?
Via regular mail. It doesn't, our ordinance doesn't say, but we've always done, just regular mail, stand, letter, notice of the public notice.
And did you keep track of everyone that you sent a letter to?
Yeah, I make a copy of the mailing label and stick in the.
Are you aware of any provision in the West Virginia Code that. Um, requires a different distance, uh, notification requirement?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, so basically you're going off of the Fayette County zoning ordinance in terms of notifying people that live nearby.
Correct.
Well, Anthony, it's also important to note it, to note that only a handful of counties have zoning at their own, um, particular zoning. Regulations. Do you know the number these days, Angela? Last I heard, it was five.
There are seven, I believe there's one or two that have just partial county zoning. They just.
Okay.
There is, but I think there's only five that have complete county zone. You're correct.
I'd like to say one more thing, if I may.
Well, we have a lady on the, on Zoom that would like to talk. Um, I have Jane and I cannot say the last name.
Chris?
Rist and Rist. Uh, Ms. Rist, Jane, are you there?
No.
Okay, you would, you wanna go ahead and speak to?
I'm not interested in this issue. I have nothing in this issue.
Oh.
I computed her mic and I just assumed she wanted to speak.
Okay, alright, thank you. Our zoning ordinances are gonna be looked at by WVU law offices. Until that's done, we're using the current zoning that we have. Um, at the time that triple T came before us before, there was nothing that would prohibit that from happening, having its own commercial. Um, and we're at that again. So at this point. I'll make a motion to uphold the zoning commission's recommendation.
Um, the planning commission's recommendation.
Planning, right, yes, thank you.
Okay, and I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, now we're going to case number two.
I, I wouldn't like to ask, Angela, would you make a couple of notes for me for our discussion with the pl- planning clinic? Um, about notice, I mean, I think, and, and I think we need to talk to Anthony, but I. I would feel better if we did some kind of registered mail for that kind of notice and I wanna examine, um, that distance requirement also.
Um, and if I may chime in here, I would, I would send the notifications both certified mail and regular mail. Um, simply because it's not uncommon. Um, mail is sent certified mail, people won't sign for it, and then it, it sits at the post office for two weeks. And then is returned, uh, to the sender after a period of time. So at least if they do sign for it. Will have the green card, although. I've seen the postal service, uh, mess that up, but in any event, um, but I would suggest it be sent both certified mail and regular mail to help. Uh, ensure that the notification gets sent out and received.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and I do, I do wanna, I do wanna get their take on this distance requirement, the two hundred fifty feet. And, um, come, you know, see how other counties that do have zoning are doing it and what their recommendations are based on. The lawsuits they examine on these issues.
Add it to the list.
Thank you.
You're right. Alright, are we ready for the next case?
Yes.
So, um, this is Z dash five four two, dash two four dash one. It's a request of Michael D. Allen, an owner for amendment of the current PUD. On property legally described as surf point six zero Salem Road and surf one point oh three Salem Road. Um, I actually don't know if the applicants are here. Let me go check and see if they're in the hallway.
Are they on Zoom?
Is there a Michael Allen? Or Eric Smith?
They're John Smith, John Smith.
I, I don't know. You might wanna ask him if he's here. Um, I'll go ahead and proceed. Um, I did speak with them after the hearing. So the planning commission did make a motion as to deny the request. Um, this was a property that was actually zoned back in nineteen ninety-six under prior zoning laws. But the planning commission did make a recommendation based on size and spot zoning to deny the request, so.
Can you give us the history that you provided, Commissioner Brenneman and me during the canvas?
Sure, so this piece of property, it's two pieces of property that's just about one point six acres. Back in nineteen ninety-six, there was a request for plan development. At that time, we didn't have a. Distinguish between plan unit. Um, now we do, but we did not. But the current applicant, um, had requested a plan development for a greenhouse. And so it stays whenever you do a rezoning. So basically, um, the new applicant wanted to originally build six townhomes. When he came to the planning commission, changed it to five townhomes. Um, and, um, that, that's basically where we are at. Um, but the current zoning does, and you do have a letter, um, from a, um, attorney. But our ordinance now does say fifty acres minimum for plan, the, plan unit development. So that was kind of the issue that came up.
Okay.
So, did you, did you say, I'm sorry, John, did you say the applicant is not present?
The applicant is not present. I did speak to the applicant on, um, Tuesday of last week. Um, and, you know, he did know there was a hearing today. Um, he had a question about once it got denied, if it did get denied to the county commission. So I'll speak on that after you guys make a decision, but he did not tell me one way or the other if he was or was not gonna be here.
I just, I mean, I feel like, Anthony, do we have any issues with making a decision without the applicant present?
Um. I mean, the only way I would see that as an issue is if the applicant didn't know that the meeting was gonna happen.
And he didn't request that we move it to a different meeting, did he, Angela?
No, no, he got the same public notice that the neighbors get with both times, the planning commission and the county commission.
Then this parcel is actually two parcels on one lot.
Yeah, it's two parcels, two tax parcels. One's like point six and one's like one point oh six, so right at one point six acres.
Did you let the applicant, Angela, did you let the applicant know that he could ask for the meeting to be moved?
Yeah, he made no indication that he was not showing up. He made no.
But I thought you, did I hear you correctly? You said that the applicant told you that he was not available at the date and the time?
No, 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 he made a request of if this is not gonna approve. Yeah, no, he made no indication whether.
Understood.
Yeah, yeah. I also let them know at the planning commission at the end of the meeting what time the county commission, just in case they weren't sure. Yeah, he made no indications.
Well, I, I, I can tell you that based on, you know. My understanding of the history of this property that I would not have agreed with rezoning it to PUD. Um, to start with. Um, it seems like this is entirely. A rural residential neighborhood and to contrast it with the case we just heard, there are commercial businesses. All around that property. This property is, there are no other, uh, PUDs adjacent to this property. Is that right, Angela?
That's correct. It's all rural residential. It's off Gatewood Road if they. That's correct. It's all rural residential. It's off Gatewood Road if that gives you an idea of the.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, and I saw that, and I saw where it is and everything. But, but to me, that, that's totally different. I mean, I, I would never have voted to rezone it to PUD and, um, just because it, you know, it doesn't fit into that neighborhood and probably should never have been done, but um, since we're there, I'm going to move that we uphold the planning commission's recommendation and deny the rezoning application.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, so just when the, um, that I wish he was here, but when the applicant came to me, he said if the request was denied, with it being two individual parcels, he would like to build two houses on those two individual parcels. And with it being rural residential, as long as he meets the setbacks for individual dwellings, it's under rural residential. I just wanted to get that on the record that, um, if you guys denied it, that is in the class, but I don't see any reason that he could not build two individual houses on two individual parcels.
Yeah, better than, yeah, I'll be fine. Okay, um, next, recovering service for delinquent personal property tax. Smiling in the front row. Somebody else with you?
Yeah, I did. I brought plenty with me. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
Oh, and Commissioner Taylor does not have a robot driving. This, she, this car does not automatically drive by itself. I just wanted to make that clear.
No. Someone else is driving.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. Well, we wanted to bring you some more information that you requested last week. We were able to catch the recording. We kind of go back and resolve your quest.
Just one second. Okay. All right, sorry about that. A lot of people were exiting the room.
Yeah, yeah. And we brought you some information and Commissioner Reese's especially about the LRA. I did a lot of research. It seems like a really exciting project. And I don't have a clear answer today, but I would love to discuss a little bit more. We ran with West Virginia code and we looked at some other links um, that Angela, I forget her last name, sent me. Um, and I, and I've got some questions, um, but I think. I, I just had some questions about some different things, and I would love to have sidebar maybe with you or somebody.
Me or anybody.
Get some clarity around it. I think, I think I know the line, so it's very interesting. And we've got some information for you specifically regarding the personal property tax tickets, and we broke out some information. I did, um, send one to her to, uh, room, and she might be sending that out to you. And my apologies, these numbers are going to look just a little bit different. We went back from the recording and I wanted to make sure I specifically put in things that you guys asked for. Um, and I don't think the first round did that, and my apologies. And so that's, that's totally on me. That's my fault. Confess my sins.
Okay. Allison?
Yeah, one of the things that, um, I think, and I appreciated the materials because that did help, um, that, that I mentioned before, and I think we need to do today is if we decide we're going to commission this service or authorize this service, I guess, that we set a, a limit on, um, if property taxes owed over a certain amount, will be referred to the prosecutor's office, and the others will be referred to this service. I think we also, and Anthony, I mean, you may want more time to think about this, but I think we also probably need to come up with a process for if Anthony's office is unable to recover it through civil means, whether we want to then have him take it back to these guys to make their attempt at it, but, but based on, I'm trying to find the numbers. Do you have the numbers in front of you, either of you, that she provided?
Did you, I just, Allison, I just sent you the updated sheet that they just handed us.
Oh, okay.
I sent it to you over text.
All right. My Zoom, my Zoom phone and my text phone are the same, so hold on just a second here.
And I think Commissioner Taylor, your questions specifically were specifically about the ranges, like what ranges, um, some of these tickets were in, so I tried to break that out for you um, down there toward the bottom of the page.
Do you, do you recall the, the amounts of the three tickets that are between ten and fifteen? Or ten and fourteen, nine, nine, nine?
Uh, you want specific amounts for them?
Yeah, you don't have to give me the names, just the amounts.
Yeah, um, four hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, uh, twenty thousand, seventeen thousand, thirteen thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand.
Wait a minute. I think we're talking in different, different types of numbers. Okay, I thought that was the total amount. What, what is that, what is this number beside the ticket numbers that you, in the chart you gave us?
Could be the total. Yeah, the, the fifteen thousand plus was the five tickets that she just read to you.
Oh, yeah, I read, I'm sorry.
One point three million.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the thirty, it was the three tickets that I was, what are the amounts of those three? That's where I'm, I'm like, wait a minute, her numbers aren't adding up here.
I got you. I am so sorry. Um, let's see here. So the, the top three, four hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one thousand. Those are the top three, and those are all from that one company, um, that Terry mentioned at the last meeting. The, my, the old company. They're all the same from three different years. I think, what is it? Uh, do you know who Trinity is, Laura?
Oh, okay, talk about New Trinity, yeah. Yeah, I found, I found New Trinity on the Secretary of State's website. They're still active, including the Secretary of State's.
I'm trying to understand, like, I, I'm missing something here because I thought that that meant that we had three tickets that added up to a total of thirty-seven thousand outstanding uh, tax debt that were above, like, in the ten of.
Okay, if you're speaking of those three, I'm sorry, if you're referring to those three tickets, um, those three tickets are thirteen thousand, eleven thousand, and twelve thousand.
See, and I'm, I don't know. I mean, my, my colleagues might disagree with me, but I think those are high enough that, yeah, I think anything like over ten thousand dollars, I'd like to see Anthony take a whack at it first, but that's, that's just me. What do you guys think?
Well, I, I don't think they can, I don't think, from what I understand, you're going to try to get the money, right? In my opinion, these fifteen plus, the five tickets, and, and maybe even the, the three, they're going to say, sue me. They're going to say, come after me. They're not.
Mind you, right.
I mean, that, that's just, you know, you're talking about four hundred thousand dollars, you're going to say, you think, I'll write you a check for four hundred dollars. Uh, and I'm not, I'm just, you know, it, it, and Anthony would probably have to end up going after him anyway. I mean, y'all don't have a lot of team that would do that. I mean.
Right.
Yeah, those, those for sure, but I'm talking about what's our minimum limit? Like, what's the limit we're setting that anything above it that Anthony should go after? And I think it needs to be ten thousand, like, anything, you know, over ten thousand dollars should, should be referred to Anthony first.
And Allison, when you say over ten grand, do you mean the cumulative total for one taxpayer of over ten grand?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, the reality.
And as a reminder, this is personal property tax. This is not real property tax.
Then you'd have to auction it off if they decide to give it to you. Then, can I, I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at how the process is going to go. First, they're going to tell them no. If you go after it, I mean.
Well, I mean, you know.
But he can send a demand letter. I mean.
I'll, I'll say this. I mean, in twenty years of private practice, I accomplished some amazing things by sending out a letter pointing out a legal liability and asking that my clients be paid. And, you know, along with that, I'll also tell you on a number of occasions, I got responses that basically said, go down sand. So.
I mean, I think you have, what I'm saying is you have a better chance than she does.
It's, I, 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 I agree. I mean, if, if the threat of litigation is hanging over their head, that changes the landscape, and they may decide to, um, try to get it taken care of.
All valid points, and, and all of it, we've seen with the world, we've seen by the stats of it.
All right, so with, with that being said, I will go ahead and make a motion that anything that's less than ten thousand dollars will allow your company to go and try to use the collection force.
And by ten thousand dollars, you mean a cumulative?
Cumulation. Yes.
Taxpayer.
Correct.
Right.
We'll get with Terry and make sure we don't have any things. Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies.
Thanks, Maggie.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next is a resolution for Armstrong Public Service District and West Virginia American Water.
There's two different versions, so if y'all want to assign a resolution, I would say you pick which one. Does Brooke send?
What's the difference between the versions? I thought they just sent a duplicate.
Maybe they sent, I didn't look at both of them, so. It's changed to say just water now, right, John?
Yes. Yeah, just to give you a history, before it said, the entire Public Service District, but West Virginia American Water is just taking over the water side of Armstrong.
Okay, well, the one I read just said water, so I think I read the right one, then.
Yes, correct.
I mean, isn't this kind of just perfunctory?
I mean, I think so.
Yeah.
Man, I think we have to do it. So I'm going to move, we approve the resolution for West Virginia American Water's takeover of Armstrong Creek Public Service District's water services.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have, uh, one issue left, and that's going to need to go into executive session.
So I move that we go into executive session. Sorry, John.
That's okay.
I'm going to delay. I want to move that we go to an executive session to discuss a personnel issue about hiring of our building inspector.
All right. All right, we're back from executive session. Commissioner Taylor?
Well, I think Ruth needs to, I think, make record about her recommendations.
Okay.
Say no decisions were made.
Yeah, no decisions were made while in the executive session. We were just getting information. Okay.
Okay.
Ruth?
So, um, last week, me, Gia, and Jack, who became the surveyors inspector, and we all three agree it should be Dan Newton. We want to expand the job a little bit to eliminate, have to use some outside people for certain things at the courthouse, like reviewing construction projects, our grant, our pre-bid meetings, that type of thing. And for the, what else? The dilapidated buildings, inspections, several different things. So we're going to change the schedule of the job a little bit, but we both, we all three agree it should be Dan Newton. And I would like to recommend you start at fifty-five.
Okay, and I went, Ruth, um, overseeing the courthouse construction projects was the one you couldn't think of, and also, tell us how many applicants and how many interviews?
So we had a lot of applicants. Most of them weren't anywhere close to qualified. We scheduled four people per interview. One of five is what we started with. One of them wasn't available. And two showed up. One called and canceled, the other was no show. The second candidate, I mean, he wasn't really, his resume said one thing, but his interview said he did not really have the qualifications, and it wasn't really knowledgeable enough. So.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to move that we approve the county administrator's recommendation.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we want to go on record saying that, uh, Alan Ballard did turn in his resignation, or his resignation, well, not resignation, but he's going to be retiring as of December first, and that was the reason for our interviews and the change.
Right.
So anything else for the good of the people? All right, then I'll make a motion to close your meeting.
Second.